All right. And we are recording.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council for January the 25th, 2021. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by councilmember Spohnhals.
Madam President, as we gather together this evening, let us always remember and act upon our responsibility to render our service to fellow citizens in our community. Let us celebrate the enduring values of life and exert our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us work together, along with our neighbors, to support what is good and right for today, tomorrow, and into the future.
And now we have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of announcements to go through, the first of which, if any council members or any of the general public would be interested in notifying their Senate or House representative, state House or Senate representative, we are asking you to please encourage them to vote for House Bill 1222, which is about public advertisement. As we lose some of our newspapers, right now, we're required to post all our meetings in newspapers and newspapers seem to be going out of fashion and we're trying to get them to give us some other avenues to advertise for our meeting, so I would encourage everyone to please help them kind of update us and it was also saves us a lot, would save us a lot of money. I'd also like to announce that Hampton is having a glass recycling event and that's going to be from January 30th to February 4th. If you are saving your glass, keeping it out of your recycling and trash and you would like to be part of that, you can look on their website to see exactly the hours and the location of that. I think there are some other announcements, but I think they'll come up in the liaison reports, so I'm just going to wait on those. So I think we're, with no further ado, we can get into the public hearing. First, before we, before I call the public hearing to order, I would like to remind everyone that the purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the citizens to provide and receive information that is associated with the decisions that are to be made by council. McCandless citizens may speak once in the public hearing for up to five minutes. Citizens not wanting to were able to speak this evening can submit their questions or their comments in writing to the town for the next 10 days. That gives us enough time to review those before the next meeting. Also during this citizen comment time, short answer questions may be answered, but detailed questions will be answered by, if you will submit those in writing, they'll be answered to you in writing. This is more of a comment time. This ordinance, I'd like to remind everyone that this ordinance, like many of our ordinances that we write, has to strike a balance between the requirements that are passed down to us from the county, from the state, sometimes at federal level, with our citizen impact. And that's our goal here this evening. So with that, I would like to call to order the public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance number 1510 and ordinance amending and updating the town's oil and gas drilling regulation. RJ, do you have a short presentation for us?
I do, and again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we've got a couple people that have been signing on throughout the beginning of the meeting. So I'll just remind everybody that the chat box is there to essentially function as a public comment sign-in sheet. So if you want to speak at this public hearing or the following one for the zoning ordinance amendment for non-conforming structures, please type your name, address, and the issue that you would like to speak on in the chat box. As long as we keep it to just sign-in sheet and no cross-talk or, you know, that no Q and A, that's not really what that function is used for, so letting us, you know, keep it to just a sign-in sheet is going to make sure that everything runs as smoothly as possible and that everyone interested gets the chance to speak. And right now, I've got seven people signed up so far. We do have another staff member that's helping me keep track of all of that, so administrative stuff out of the way, I will get into the information that I prepared for the public hearing tonight. So first of all, I do want to say that I really appreciate, you know, from in being in the planning, development, zoning, you know, departments, we've gotten a lot of great feedback from town council, from the planning commission, from the environmental advisory committee. You know, I know that members of the public are really interested in this, this, you know, oil and gas zoning amendment issue. So I'm just glad that we've been able to have a really good substantive conversation about that so far and I'm going to kind of just walk us through some of the different aspects that people have been asking questions about, give us an overview of how we got here. And then, once that's wrapped up, we can open it up to council questions and then, I believe, the public comment section. And Sandra, if you don't mind keeping an eye on the people in the waiting room so that I can do the presentation part while we've got people potentially still coming in. All right. So, um, how exactly did we get here? I guess that's probably, you know, let's zoom out and think about how this process started. This actually predates me a bit. It seems that council started to consider this, this whole issue around October of 2019, so a few months before I came in board. This ordinance drafting process began basically to strengthen the regulations in our existing oil and gas development conditional use zoning code. And this seems, it seems that, you know, from sort of the research that I've done and conversations I've had with different folks in the town staff and council, that this was in response to sort of a bigger discussion in the Greater North Hills area on oil and gas uses in nearby communities. Since then, as I mentioned, we've had feedback from the planning commission, the environmental advisory committee, we've had, you know, environmental discussions at the environmental advisory committee, we've had folks in the industry that we've talked to, so, you know, it's really become a broad scope of taking in the information and trying to craft the best zoning update that we can with this particular use. So, in ordinance, just in general, any ordinance that was really governing oil and gas as a conditional use was first established in McCandless in 2010. So prior to that, this type of development could have been applied for in pretty much any district as what's referred to as a special exception use. That's just a, you know, a hearing that goes before the zoning hearing board. In that case, safety criteria would have to be established in a way that was kind of reactionary to getting the request in the first place, not in a proactive way. And so this contrast between reactive versus proactive zoning ordinances and zoning amendments is really important to this overall discussion tonight. So, you know, why are we here considering this amendment in the first place? Sort of the, the base level thing to know is that the state's planning code, referred to as the municipality's planning code or the MPC, obligates each municipality in Pennsylvania to provide some area of the community that can theoretically be developed for mineral oil and gas uses. And so really, the best approach that a community can take to this fact that the state, you know, requires that we have some portion of the community open for it, is to be proactive in establishing the safety regulations, you know, in case this type of development does ever actually take an interest in the community. You know, proactive planning is good planning and good planning is a value that's been shown to be really important to this community. So, you know, we've kind of just carried that forward in updating this ordinance because it's part of the community conversation. So the goals of this amendment are to really update the existing land use and safety regulations on these types of oil and gas developments, you know, unconventional wells, it's kind of the more technical term that you may hear for colloquially fracking type of development. And we're really looking to just bring our regulations in line with today's best practices while also kind of keeping in mind what we are or are not permitted to regulate under the state law. That's a really key piece of how we've had to think about this as we've worked on the draft. So you may be wondering what exactly the state allows us to regulate about these uses. The MPC allows a community to regulate basically where a use occurs, which is zoning districts. Certain aspects of that zoning district's use, such as how far it has to be away from property lines or other structures, also known as setbacks, how big a piece of land has to be to develop it in certain ways, land area, you know, and certain performance standards like lighting, noise, impacts to neighboring properties. What we can't regulate is whether a use can happen at all in the community because that's called exclusionary zoning and is not legal under the state's planning code. So really, you know, what I've seen through this drafting process is that town council, the staff, everyone involved have really been trying to make the best efforts to consider with this draft amendment, what's within our purview to regulate, you know, what, what's basically in our zoning toolbox is given to us by the state. So, you know, in addition to that, Allegheny County also requires that all municipalities in the county send any draft zoning amendments about anything being considered to their planning office for review and the feedback that we got from them was that our draft ordinance was very comparable to a lot of the model ordinances that they've seen recently in, in the county, by which, you know, they mean template ordinances essentially that have been developed to cover best practices in the field, but also remain compliant with state law. So, I do, you know, that's sort of just the, the big picture, how does zoning work, you know, per state law and in relation to this whole issue and to our draft amendment? We have been receiving some questions about the district that is listed, you know, the institutional district as we call it. I do want to be clear because this is a question that we've gotten, you know, we've gotten a couple times some conversations that we've had, that this oil and gas development use is already permitted in the institutional district with the code that's on the books right now. But actually with less stringent requirements for distance from other properties or impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So, what we're doing with this draft amendment, we hope, is, is that, you know, we're significantly tightening up the regulations while also making sure that we're not getting into any risk of exclusionary zoning practice. And after reviewing sort of the town's data on size of developable properties, how close existing structures such as businesses and homes are to each other, to the open spaces in the community, all of that, it became clear that the use was originally placed in the institutional district because those are really the only pieces of land that were large enough to accommodate oil and gas uses even under those looser regulations. So now that, you know, we're kind of looking at potentially stricter regulations again as the industry best practices, you know, knowledge has evolved, there's not going to be anywhere that is, you know, a smaller expanse of land or available free space that would be more appropriate to place this use. So I want to be really clear, you know, what are the impacts the institutional district, if the zoning amendment that we have drafted and we're talking about tonight has passed, there is no new property that will be opened up to oil and gas development that was not already previously available in the existing zoning code. And ultimately beyond that, it's up to individual property owners to decide how they want to try to use their land under our zoning codes. You know, but, but this amendment is not enabling anyone to do something that they couldn't do before and that they couldn't do today technically under the, under the zoning code that we've got in the books, just with less regulation. So, you know, kind of getting to, to the final impacts potentially of this draft amendment, you know, what if we have a property owner in the community that decides they may want to try to market their, their land for some sort of oil and gas development use? I mentioned earlier, conditional use, that's kind of, you know, one of those mystery zoning terms that, you know, to kind of break it down a little bit more, a conditional use application, they have to submit all the same information they normally would under a regular land development application. And that would also include for these particular, you know, uses that we identify as conditional uses. They would have to submit information that enables us to evaluate the proposal based on all the safety requirements that would be included in this draft if it were to pass, how far it would be from other properties and buildings, what risk of impact there might be on other nearby properties and whether they'd submitted all the environmental and public safety information that is required by the state and that is up to the state's standards for those things that they regulate that aren't under the purview of zoning and land use. Both the planning commission and the town council would review this information in the normal process for land development applications, however, when a use is considered a conditional use and not just a permitted by right use, it also requires a public hearing. So residents and taxpayers could come and provide their, their comments on that specific development proposal for that specific use, much like everyone is able to come here tonight and hear the information and provide their feedback. So, last, you know, sort of wrap-up, is there currently any oil and gas development being proposed in McCandless? No, no one has contacted me to inquire about this. There are no applications that are pending. You know, no conversations going on with any developers. This is entirely a process that's been driven by really wanting to be proactive and make sure that what we've got in the books are the most up-to-date regulations that, you know, meet, again, our obligations under state law and are making sure that we're protecting, you know, our community's assets, our residents. You know, sort of the things that are really important to us while also making sure that we stay on the right side of state law. So, all of that said, I'm just going to remind some of the folks, I've been seeing a couple questions coming in in the chat. If you want to provide a public comment, please type your name, address, and the issue. I'm assuming it's this oil and gas amendments and so that's the couple of comments we've gotten. And, and you will be queued up at the public comment section. But right now, this is just a presentation and then council questions. So, I've talked a whole lot, lot of information in a little package, but if, if you all have any questions, comments, anything for me, I'm happy to elaborate.
I'd like to remind everyone in the chat box, we have two public hearings tonight and we have a public comment on just everything else section. So please, in the chat box, say what you, which one you want to make your come, your comment about, so we can queue you with the right time. Because if you want to talk about the next public hearing, then we don't want to waste time, you know, getting you going in this one when this isn't the one you had a comment on, so please, your name and your address, which public hearing you want to talk about, or if you want to talk at the general public hearing, so we know which one. So, with that, we usually start these with council. So if council gives people a little more time to sign up also, do, are there any comments from council or questions for RJ? Or anyone for that matter? Yes, councilmember Spohnhals.
Yes, I just had, I want to make sure that I'm correct. This is RJ. I received a communication from a resident earlier this evening and as I recall our zoning map, we do not have an industrial district in McCandless.
We do not have anything that's identified as heavy industry, which is what oil and gas development would fall under.
Correct. And I just, really, it's a clarification because, you know, certainly if we were a community that had a large area set aside as industrial, especially heavy industrial, it would be the, what I would consider the obvious legal location for us to go to. Our, one of our problems is that we don't have such a district right now.
Yes, we're, we're actually quite built out. It's surprising because, you know, you look around and there's so many trees and green space and, you know, you've got nice yards in between you and your neighbors, but when, when you really take a look at how close structures are to each other from all the different directions and land in between, it's really not that much to fit these types of uses. So, you know, I, I believe historically that was part of the reason for, for choosing the district that they did originally.
Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Smith?
I just had a couple comments slash questions. Really just limited to a couple things. The first was a page two where where we're defining what drilling is. The only thing there that caught my mind is that it includes removing a blockage, reworking a well to remove a blockage. And that just worries me a little bit because it seems like removing a blockage might be something that should just be done, that should be done. You know, I have safety concerns with it and, and obviously just the operational concerns. So is, what's the, the reason for including removing a blockage within the definition of drilling?
You know what, I'll have to say that definition predates me, so I would have to do a little more researches to the precise wording. But in general, the way that I would think about if there was already a, a well that had been operating, of which I'm not particularly aware that we've got active wells, but, you know, hey, it's a big town. But if, if something was already approved under, you know, previous regulations prior to the passage of any sort of draft amendment, that would be grandfathered in and I would not necessarily consider that a brand-new development. Have to be re-permitted under all of this unless it was a completely abandoned use, meaning it's been inactive for a very long time.
Okay, yeah, I, I think to me, just removing that, that blockage language would make me more comfortable. But, you know, that was, that was the first thing and then I'll just limit this to, to two and that's where, you know, I, I think that's the kind of stuff where we're hearing from people who kind of understand all these issues a whole lot more intimately than I do would, would be helpful. And then the second comment is, is a, a comment that spans a couple different provisions. It's down at page 21 to 22 where we require sound, I think it's for sound testing. And we require testing, I think it's either from the property line or from 100 feet of a protected structure, whichever is closer to the building. And the only concern I have there, overall, I don't have a concern with it, but the concern I do have is if there is somebody who makes a noise complaint and 100 feet within the protected structure on their property is still on their property. And so we're required, we're then requiring the drilling company to go on to somebody else's property to perform the testing. And if that landowner doesn't give permission to do the testing. So it could, it might be, you know, a different landowner other than the complaining landowner. So that's my only issue there is it, is we're potentially setting up a situation where it would be impossible for an operator to comply.
So I'm, I'm taking a look at this particular section right now.
And I could say it's page 21, it would be the paragraph numbered three. And then going down to the next page, page 22, the paragraph numbered five, I might have missed a third reference, but I, I believe those are the only two.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the context of this is specifically talking and it, it's kind of, you know, this is a long ordinance, so sometimes it's hard to follow the thread of, you know, where the outline refers to. If I recall correctly, these stipulations were discussing, like if somebody, protected structures for the benefit of the audience, basically any inhabited structure, whether it's a business, residence, you know, some sort of building that's in use. So if someone, let's say in a home, that's, that's, you know, near 1,000 feet of the well, which is the protected structure setback that we have. If they were to make a noise complaint, then essentially the company would need to test to verify whether that noise complaint was accurate. So, you know, it's kind of hard to enforce a decibel limit level, you know, any sort of regulation if the property owner is unwilling to let the company come in and do the testing to ascertain whether there is indeed a violation. And I, I believe that the town also has some jurisdiction over what noise testing company were to be used. But the well operator would have to, you know, they would have to, to fund the testing to verify that they're not doing anything out of compliance. I think in function, this would end up being the complainant has to let them enter their property to confirm or, you know, deny whether there's a violation. I won't say 100% certainty because there are always strange situations that arise, but it's probably pretty unlikely that that would require a third party not involved in the complaint to have to allow access to property.
Yeah, and I think, and I did find the third reference, it's actually further up on page 21. So I think that's true with the reference in paragraph five, but still the way it reads, it, it might make that requirement. But then up in, in paragraph Z, one and three, that's with respect to just the noise plan in general. And so, you know, that's prior to, to drilling the well, they have to do the continuous testing. That also has that same requirement, so that wouldn't even require a complaint?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the way that is, and I've seen this in, in other ordinances or what, you know, the county might refer to as a model ordinance, where it has that stipulation that if for some reason you can't complete more precise noise testing prior to the drilling, the default level assumed is 55 decibels. And so if for some reason, you know, an operator was not allowed to have entry to confirm whatever that ambient noise level was prior to drilling, that's what they would fall back to. So there's sort of a, a catch-all cooked in there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if there's any way we could tweak that just where, you know, we're not potentially putting the operator in a position where, you know, where they either have to go on to somebody else's property where they might not be allowed or not be able to do something that they would otherwise be able to do, I, I would just like to, to kind of clean that up, but that's, but those are it, those are my only two slash three comments.
Does council have any other questions? Okay, good, because council has had this ordinance for quite some time and RJ has taken many comments and made many adjustments, so I'd like for us to, if we can, if there aren't any more questions to get forward and hear from the public. So RJ, do you want to get started with the first citizen?
Yes, so, so far I've got seven signed up and just a friendly reminder for, oh, Trish, sorry.
Do our citizens who are making comments need to be sworn in?
No, no.
Enough of this, okay.
No, we, we don't. This is, this is not that kind of hearing, not a legal hearing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, um, as Sandra mentioned in the chat, if you came in sort of mid-presentation, mid-discussion, there are some instructions for signing up for public comment. There's going to be a little bit of time if you've come in later and still want to do that because I've got seven folks signed up to get through first. So I am going to look for the first one on here, which is Mary Ann Love. I'm going to send you a microphone and camera request and then I will hop off camera here and let the public comment begin. I'll give her a couple moments to hop on here.
Now RJ, can you maybe mention like the next person who you're going to have coming up so they can be getting ready to?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That want to speak and, you know, we'd like to be able to hear from everyone and, you know, as, as expeditiously as possible.
Yes, so, so the second person, oh, looks like Mary Ann is signing on. The second person that I've got signed up is Deb Sayen. So she'll be going next after Mary Ann. And Mary Ann, I've sent you a microphone request. You can accept and turn your mic on.
I did unmute, is that right?
There you are, we've got you, we've got you now.
Okay, I don't know what I look like, I don't know what I sound like, but here I go. So, hi, everyone. I'm going to preface this with someone, I've been told that fracking is classified as heavy industrial, but it can be in light industrial under PA law. So, that's for someone else with a lot more education and experience than I to check into, but my comments were prefaced on that understanding. I've been a McCandless resident for 50-plus years and I got involved in these ordinances because I'm in the Clean Air Group at St. Paul's Church. We were asked to look into our township's gas and oil ordinances because most had not been updated, leaving the town and its residents valuable, I'm, I'm sorry, vulnerable. They are valuable too. They are valuable too. I began by attending the environmental committee meetings and learned updating the ordinances was on the town's to-do list. But then life got in the way, including the town manager and the zoning officer retiring. So the process has taken a while. I have followed from environmental committee through planning commission and now to council. So I know firsthand that a lot of folks have worked hard to add protections for residents. It's very important that these ordinances pass because those protections are much needed. I've also learned it's a tedious, difficult job and definitely not fun. So I'm very grateful to all you folks who've done all the work. And I'm also relieved that the ordinances are now to this public comment stage, the last before council votes. But, and here comes the big but. There is a big thing that I hope town will consider before the vote. I'm very concerned that the ordinance still leave the place for oil and gas in institutional zoning. Institutional is where things like schools, churches, libraries, senior living facilities, those kinds of things are located. And most of them are but residences. So just for image, I'm going to call them warm and fuzzy places. So if one or many of these institutions sell a facility and or land to an oil and gas company, then an oil and gas development would be built there. Definitely not warm and fuzzy. McCandless has a lot of institutional zoning, which adds to being such a nice place to live. But I am concerned that by designating oil and gas to be in institutional, we're actually multiplying the chances of getting oil and gas because there's so much institutional. Two examples immediately come to my mind. The current consolidation of the Catholic institutions and if the school district would want to sell some property. It just seems like we're adding unnecessary risk. Places like Cranberry have put it in the middle of commercial zoning. So the businesses currently there would have to be willing to sell if oil and gas, before oil and gas development could happen. A year or so ago, the state mandated municipalities had to designate an industrial site for marijuana to grow, produce and sell. So McCandless was forced to create an industrial area in about the only place it could, the corporate drive area. Also not a warm and fuzzy place. I believe and I hope you'll consider and agree that the industrial area is better suited for oil and gas development. Which also means that businesses and office buildings currently there would need to be willing to sell for oil and gas development to occur. That would also reduce the risk to one place versus many warm and fuzzy institutional places. Plus, that site.
Ms. Love, I'm, I'm sorry that your, your five minutes are, are expired.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, I had to preface with my, the comment I wasn't expecting about, um, it not being qualified under light industrial. So I figured I had a little extra time. You're not going to give it to me though, huh?
So we have, because we have so many other people ready to go.
Can I do one more sentence? Just one sentence for that time?
Your, Madam President, your call.
One sentence, Mary Ann Love, you're sending back for the rest of them.
Okay, the township doesn't, um, the township doesn't need to make it easy for oil and gas developers. Just has to make it, may just has to designate a place.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, um, and, and to the stenographer, I have all of the addresses and the spellings of the name recorded. So if you do need a follow-up, please feel free to, um, shoot us an email tomorrow and, and we'll take care of that. Uh, next up, we've got Deb Sagan. Uh, and while she is getting ready to come on camera, the person following her will be Rita Martin. So Rita, whenever Deb is done, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. You always look so nice on Zoom. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for all your pre-work, your prevention work on this ordinance. Prevention is always the best way to go. Um, and allowing us to weigh in so that we can tweak it a little bit. And if Mary Ann has anything else to say, I'll yield her a minute for sure. So of my time, I am, I've heard that before somewhere, so.
But not here.
No, not here.
Not here.
Okay, so, um, I just, she was very well prepared and, uh, my questions are, are brief and I don't, like you said, if you can answer them when I'm finished or at the end, that's fine, if not, um, the next time. So you brought, we've been discussing the heavy industrial and industrial is, and I'm gathering, but I wanted to clarify, is there a difference between zoning that is heavy industrial and in just plain industrial? Uh, it sounds like, you know, there's some question on that. Also, people have been mentioning land abutting and the sound, uh, noise issue. And I'm glad that at least, uh, the noise issue is in the ordinance, but my concern is that we are surrounded by a park. Uh, and it does come very close to our town, um, hall even to, to that land. So, um, and we saw in Deer Lakes Park that there was some drilling done, I believe, I'm just going on hearsay, that there was some drilling done on a residence property outside of Deer Lakes Park. And then it kind of went underneath him and, um, went into Deer Lakes Park. So I think that's something that, uh, should, should come to your attention. And if you haven't investigated that, that's something that should be investigated. And I know for a fact, I heard, I was at the meeting perhaps maybe five years ago at the Rose Barn in North Park, I don't know if anybody else here was there, where Mr. Fitzgerald spoke. And at the time, uh, he was adamant that he was, uh, going to drill in the parks, that he was going to investigate that, um, strongly. So, uh, I hope that the government entities can meet and discuss whether that be our county council representative or if someone can ha, hold a meeting with Mr. Fitzgerald so that we're clear on what his intentions are at this time. And, um, I am concerned about the noise because if the, if the drilling would take place in North Park, um, you know, how much say would anybody have over the noise, um, if there was any pollution of any kind, um, as well? So tho, those are some, uh, standards that I wanted to bring up that perhaps need to be looked at right now. Uh, I think that's all I had. Let me just look at my notes here. Now, once again, I'd just like to thank you for the, um, prevention work that you've done and, um, you know, looking ahead for our future and the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Deb.
All right, let me get the, oh, Rita, you made it easy for me, you popped up on camera.
Yes, well, I too want to thank you all for, for this proactive work here. Zoning is one of the most important things that can be done to protect citizens and thank you for that. But I too am concerned about the institutional properties we have, the libraries, the schools. Obviously in Mars, they were able to do that close to a school. On school property, I believe, and I would like to have that re-looked at and I agree with, uh, Ms. Love, that, um, perhaps putting it in that industrial zone that was qualified for marijuana use or mari, marijuana selling or whatever would be a great option. And it would allow us to keep our schools and libraries safe from all that. That's the first thing. And secondly, I tried to understand but didn't quite when I was reading the ordinance. What protections do we have, and you might be able to answer this, for wells? Because many people in our community still have well water and underground streams. We know that those two are greatly affected by fracking in distance. It could be well away from the fracking site and still be detrimental to those two, underground sources of water. Those are, uh, that, those are basically my two concerns and of course the park. What can we do to protect the park as a community doesn't belong to us? But I too have heard the rumors that, um, they are going, they're open territory for drilling. And I'm always driving through, making sure it's not there because if it is, I will get my little signs out and start protesting. Anyway, those are the two or three things that I have questions about and I hope you'll be able to answer them. Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Um, if you don't mind, Madam President, since there are a couple of brief questions that keep coming up, do you mind if I provide the appropriately brief answer for them?
That would be fine, thank you.
Okay, um, so the, the question about what is referred to as the C-six district, uh, light industrial, that is primarily a mixed-use district with residential and commercial uses with the addition of light industry as an option, which has historically been termed as manufacturing that is entirely contained within a building that you can't hear, see, smell, anything outside of that building, um, or research labs. So those are those types of light industry uses that are included in that district. Regarding water quality and pollution questions, almost all of that, if not all, except for, you know, maybe noise or certain lighting, are controlled by state-level regulations. So a water or stream regulation would not necessarily be something that falls under local government land use purview. Uh, so with that said, uh, I've, I've got our next person that's going to be speaking is Irene Caliendo. I believe I said that correctly, hopefully. Um, and we have, after Irene will be Larry Schweiger.
Um, I have one question for you, um, RJ, and that is, in our C-six, which is our light industry, which of course does not meet the definition of oil and gas. If we decided that we wanted to put it there, would it fit in that district?
That's a really good question. Um, I actually took a look at the map a couple of days ago since, you know, this has been brought up a couple of times. And with the protected structure setbacks, which require you to, uh, place the vertical well bore, basically, you know, the drill head, um, at least a thousand feet from any structure that isn't on your property, pretty much from any direction, um, there was not a spot on any of those C-six properties I could find that would meet that setback. Um, so that's, that's definitely a factor in this conversation.
So, so that means, no, it would not fit there?
It would not fit there.
Thank you. Okay, all right, yes, all right, next person?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask?
I'm, I'm sorry, who's, who's speaking?
It was me, I wanted to ask a quick question.
Councilmember Schweiger, just give me the high sign so I know who's talking.
I was waving. So RJ, what if they were to come in and remove buildings, they could, that the setbacks that that would work, is that possible then?
Um, well, so the, the measurement that I took a look at was also outside of the C-six district. It's a, a pretty small, you know, section of land on Corporate Drive. And you'd be surprised how far a thousand feet goes, um, for a good portion of the property. The LA Fitness and the surrounding developments, which are in a completely different district, um, are actually within a thousand feet of it. And then when you start going to the other angles, individual, single-family homes or part of the, you know, Vincentian Villas area, those are also within a thousand feet of the property. So, um, that analysis was done looking at, you know, even outside of the C-six district, how far did we have to go? And I really couldn't, I couldn't find a spot, to be honest.
So we did what we called, uh, RJ called a doomsday calculation, which is if we leveled every building on that property, could we set a well in the middle of it and would it meet the setbacks? It does not.
Correct.
Okay, you ready for me? Yep. Well, good evening, and I just want to echo the previous speaker's profound appreciation for the time and effort that has been put into, um, getting this ordinance in, in as, doing as minimal disruption to our communities as possible. And I'm just going to make a couple of general comments. Uh, in general, I think we need to have an ordinance that is so very heavily in favoring the minimizing the citizen impact. And it, it, it has to be skewed toward that, there's no question about it. I would like an understanding, um, RJ's opening comments has some mitigation to this possibility. But I do think that we need to make it very narrow and allow it only, uh, on industrial, in industrial areas and protect residential and institutional and, and the green areas in our communities. I think that's imperative. So I, I will just end with a, a question that might show my naivete. But I'm wondering, since our state legislature has never seemed fit to make Pennsylvania, uh, one of the, it is, we are the only state that does not tax for fracking, although our departed, uh, Speaker of the House claimed that there was some kind of assessment or whatever, but. Impact, impact tax. Yeah, yes, but we all know that that's not the same as taxing. So I'm wondering, can the township of McCandless levy a tax for fracking that would perhaps make us less desirable of an area? And if not, at least get some money for that. Thank you very much. I will yield the floor. Thank you.
All right, uh, I'm locating the next person, which is Larry Schweiger. And keeping up with the, you know, next person following after, uh, Mr. Schweiger will be Paul Heckman.
Well, thank you. Um, I want to give a little bit of history, my personal history about, uh, the Article One, Section twenty-seven. Back in nineteen seventy, I joined the Pennsylvania Legislature and worked, uh, there for a total of ten years. I worked for nine House members and nine senators, nine Republicans and nine, nine Democrats. So it was a very fair and bipartisan committee. And during that time, we wrote twenty-eight major environmental laws, including the original oil and gas law that was adopted uh, after, actually after I left in nineteen eighty-one. Uh, I share that because one of our members, Franklin Curry, uh, wrote the original Article One, Section twenty-seven. And I want to draw your attention to a few words there, uh, that I think are extraordinarily important. And that is that Pennsylvania's public natural resources and read into that North Park are the common property of all people, including generations yet to come. And I want to speak about the, uh, the park because I think that is the, the target that the industry is going to go after. Uh, let's not kid ourselves, there's a three-thousand-acre piece of real estate there. And, uh, when the Cracker Plant is open, and it will be soon, it will need over a thousand wells to supply the energy that they need to produce the plastic at the Cracker Plant. So we're going to see an explosion of natural gas throughout our region. And, uh, we, we know from the, the current conditions in other places that this has enormous impact on the public health. In nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, in twenty-twelve, I, I went back to the legislature and actually lobbied against the provisions of Act thirteen, uh, while they were being drafted because I saw the enormous amount of oil and gas money flowing into the pockets of lawmakers that, that adopted this piece of legislation. And it has many flaws in it. Uh, I won't go into them in detail, but I'll simply tell you that I have witnessed firsthand, the state Supreme Court has recognized the flaws, some of the flaws in that act. And we should not be totally driven by that law, but by the Constitution itself. The Constitution is self-executing, the courts have ruled that they are. The Constitution is self-executing. The courts have ruled that they are. And we should understand that we have an obligation. We, the town of McCandless, has an obligation to protect this public natural resource for generations yet to come. The, the other thing I would like to mention is that the the park itself is highly vulnerable because of its proximity to a lot of residential areas. And as a, as a public park, it cannot accommodate an industrial development. And incidentally, back in twenty eighteen, I was a part of a lawsuit that went all the way to the State Supreme Court. We won a case called Gorsline versus the Board of Supervisors in Fairfield Township. An inflection energy, which was in Lycoming County, Pennsylvania. And anyway, in that case, the US, the State Supreme Court ruled that shell gas development is indeed an industrial land use. And as such, they determined it was not compatible with residential areas. I think they would have the same response to a, a state and local park. There are other court cases we can cite, but clearly the, the, the State Supreme Court is sympathetic to the idea of protecting the park against these kinds of developments. The other point that I would like to make is that fracking has enormous consequences on public health. We now know that children born within a half mile of a well tend to have twenty five percent higher probability of low birth weights. That's from a, a university of Princeton and Chicago study. We also know that the Journal of American College of Cardiology has determined that people who live near fracking wells have heart conditions and, and end up with, with heart failures. And that's a well documented study here in Pennsylvania. And more recently, dozens of children and young adults have been diagnosed with E1s coma and other forms of cancer around frac wells. The state of Pennsylvania was going to fund a study to do that, but unfortunately that's been short-stopped by the coronavirus epidemic. But we can, I think safely assume that fracking is not compatible with a park. Frankly, it's not compatible with any of the other locations that you're all talking about. I would urge at, at the minimum that the town of McCandless changed the zoning on North Park from industrial or from institutional rather to, to recreational or some other category that protects it from fracking. That's where the industry wants to go. That's where the opportunity is for heavy development and we should avoid that. Your time and thank you.
Your five minutes is up. Thank you.
All right. Oh, here we go. Paul, you made it easy. Thank you.
We try when we can.
When, when the video comes on, it pops right up to the top of my feed. So.
Who's next after him, RJ?
It is Brian Sullivan, and that is the last person I have signed up for public comment.
And, and I'll be fairly brief because I've, I've worked in heavy industry for forty some years before I retired. And I can tell you there is no place in McCandless for heavy industry. It, it just not what goes into an area such as ours. And certainly I don't see how an industrial operation, and this is nothing but an industrial operation, can go into an institutional or a residential area with any reasonable expectations. That, that, that's basically all I have to say about it. I think everybody else has said all the other things that go with that.
All right. And gonna look for Brian. Let's see. We are up to three pages of users on the screen, so forgive me while I take a second.
Okay, thanks. Can I go?
Yes. Did you want to put your camera on or would you prefer off?
I would prefer off.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Okay. So thanks again echoing everyone else's kudos for all the hard work. And I just wanted to comment on my appreciation for the balance of the three options for basically bending this to accommodate the realities that the town is faced with. And it seems like it's a trade between one hand banning fracking. And then the other hand, the other option is risking the county fracking North Park. Or some small number of other industrial institutional settings that would be allowed, given the large setbacks. And I think the schools and the, the libraries would be safe, but again, I'm not sure. And then it's reducing the setbacks and then putting it into that commercial area that's adjacent to some residential areas. And banning fracking would be a significant legal expense potentially for the town because we'd have to be a test case for the whole state to challenge whether we could say that you know, the environmental concerns of fracking outweigh the, that are protected in the state constitution outweigh the, the protections for fracking at the local level. And then the nonprofits that are potentially able to devote pro bono efforts towards that fight would I think they're, they're mostly focused on the Grant Township case. So that's currently just the timings bad, I think, for, for them helping us on that. And it would just be really expensive. And so I think, I think the time is just not right for that. And risking the county fracking North Park, I understand the concerns and I, I agree with the concerns. I don't want people to frack the park either. But we can exert leverage on the, on the county. And again, I acknowledge that the county has demonstrated its willingness to do that already. So that would be another fight that we'd have to fight. And then reducing the setbacks and allowing fracking in that commercial area at the triangle between I think it's Duncan and McKnight and Babcock. That's tough because that's really close, as folks have mentioned, to residential neighborhoods and no one who's, who spoke, and I'm sorry, I, I know. I think pretty much all the people who spoke lives in that immediate area. So if we did push it in that direction, I think we'd have to do some really serious outreach to the folks on the Fairfield Road area and the Vicentian Villas residents. There's another residential development there for older folks. But I did reach out to my cousin who lives in Winchester, which is right across Babcock from North Park Lounge. He's like a third house in on Winchester. And he was like, whoa, that, I didn't know that was on the, on the, on the possibility. You know, and hearing Larry talk about, you know, the, you know, health risks, risks for people who live under a half mile away from a fracking site, you know, his kids fall into that, well into that hat, less than a half mile distance for sure. So I can say that, you know, and he's just one that I just reached out to. So a hundred percent of the people that I know who would be impacted. You know, would object to that. So I wouldn't be surprised if that would be just the beginning of that, that potential object, set of objections. So, you know, given all that, you know, this is, we, I think folks have noticed this is the first step. You know, we're, we're dipping our toe in here. You know, we're going to keep fighting this as it, as it plays forward and we appreciate all the good work the folks have done and you know, however, you know, the town decides best to, to, you know, make this right. We will continue to support and continue to represent the interests of the, of the citizens as this plays into the future. With that, I only had one other comment and it was in response to the question about removing blockage. And I was concerned about that being the, but at a certain point, it butts up against refracking basically. So we want to be clear if we're going to dilute that language to not enable folks to basically refrack for free. Because that would be a significant effort and noisy and, you know, toxic, you know, emissions and all that. So that's it.
Right. I, I just want to note, we had one person sign up directly with Sandra while this was going on. So we do technically have one more public commenter. And I also received a question from one of the individuals that commented earlier. That did not use all of their time, that wanted to know if they could use the remainder of the five minutes that were unexpired.
I'm sorry, each person can speak one time. We don't keep up with that time. We don't share time.
That was what I thought.
They get a second bite at the apple if they want to just comment in the general public. Comment later on, you know, we have this public hearing, we have the next public hearing, then we have additional public comment. So if they wanted to finish off in the additional public comment, they can do that.
I will put a pin in that.
They have another. And the other thing too, RJ, is I see Vince has his hand up.
He is the next commenter that we had.
I just wanted to make sure that we knew what was happening with that. Okay, thank you.
That's that. So I, I am going to cue him now for ready. Okay. There you are, sir.
Okay, thank you. My point is about the noise levels in the ordinance. And there is a table in the ordinance. And I'd like to have some of that information explained. As I understand that the the firm doing the drilling or is obligated to do noise level measurements. And if they don't, they have to use a default level of fifty five decibels. And then that table allows them to exceed either the measured average or the fifty five decibels at five, ten and twenty decibels for a period of one minute. So that's my understanding. And I'd like that clarified. I should have first thanked all of those who worked on the ordinance. I commented about noise and lighting to an ordinance that was written clemmingly many years ago. And I'm also concerned about the lighting issue because even within a thousand feet, the lighting required for drilling can be very onerous. And I would also comment that the lake at North Park is a very important environmental asset and we shouldn't allow pollution to destroy it. That's an ecosystem within itself and we need to be very careful about disturbing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. RJ, do you have anyone else that would like to make comments on the public hearing about oil and gas?
Oh, that is everyone that I had signed up.
All right. All right. Is there, I'll give council one more opportunity if they want to make a comment. Otherwise, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. All right. Terrific. Then I'll close the public hearing on the ordinance, the tentative ordinance from oil and gas regulation. And we will open the, the public hearing on the tentatively identified ordinance number one five one one, the ordinance amending the town's zoning ordinance regarding non-conforming structures. RJ, you want to tell us a little bit about what that means?
Sure. So this ordinance in, you know, sort of a slightly less formal draft form was brought to town council in a staff report. I want to say sometime in the fall, maybe October, late October, early November. This is sort of the first one that individually, through, you know, my experience working with, with the different zoning aspects of the town that I'm proposing for council to consider. Basically, I've noticed that we have a significant number of zoning variance requests that are, you know, primarily residential property. So, you know, single family homeowners that are related to things like my house was built when the setback for my type of house on the type of zoning district, you know, primarily R two. When that setback was ten feet and now it's fifteen feet, but I want to put in addition on the back of my house that lines up with my existing building line. And they would have to go to the zoning hearing board under our current code, which requires that anything that you do, no matter what was already on the lot before that was what we refer to as legally non-conforming. Basically, it was okay at the time it was built, but regulations have become more stringent and it wouldn't be okay to build new now. Anything that you add on to a non-conforming structure has to confirm exactly to the current code or you have to go to the zoning hearing board. Now, this is a good mechanism to control, you know, buildings that let's say maybe if, if there was a commercial property that was way different from what the vision of the town is going forward, they would at least have to stop by the zoning hearing board and, you know, give the public the opportunity to comment. And then, you know, the board would look at testimony and evidence and either vote yes or no. But for these residential properties, you, I, I don't think that I've seen one that would fall under this criteria that's being proposed to be changed in this ordinance that hasn't been approved. And, you know, I, I think that that speaks to the fact that the town sort of as a whole in the zoning hearing board over the years has established standard that if you're just adding on to an existing building line, that maybe is a little bit over the line from if you were building new construction today. But isn't changing the character of the neighborhood. It's, it's not like you're doing something that's totally out of left field or isn't any different or more intense than what's already there. Sort of as a group, we've all said, well, that's okay. And so if that's the case, which, you know, over the years it has been, let's, you know, remove the barrier financially, time wise. You know, you have to wait at least a month to get before the zoning hearing board. We have to run ads. You know, required by the state to do so at certain time intervals. And as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, the cost of ads is about to go up significantly for municipalities that have to run paper ads, since, you know, there's been some discontinuation of certain ad runs that are more affordable. Circulating the Pittsburgh area. So, you know, not only are the costs rising that we kind of have to pass on to the applicants, but they may quickly become costs that are irresponsible to pass on to the applicants because they're so high, you know, for something very simple. So all of that said, this zoning ordinance would permit people to add to a non-conforming structure as long as the addition is not going any further than the existing structure already is, isn't any more intense, isn't, you know, increasing a non-conformity or creating a new non-conformity. And I know that's kind of jargon-y, but I don't really know a better way to, to put it. So this version of the draft just includes residential structures because it was sort of the most conservative one that we could, you know, bring forward. But there was another version presented to council that would also include commercial structures. You know, again, that's really kind of the group's decision. I, I could see a case for either. But all that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, take comments on the substance of this ordinance. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments from council members? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I know, big surprise, I'm saying something. So for me, and this is, I guess, more a comment than really a question. For me, I'm concerned with the distinction between residential and non-residential. Basically because of concerns for small business. So there are buildings that have been small business buildings for quite a while that under the current code would be non-conforming. And for example, and this would relate to section thirteen forty three oh one B and D. And so for example, if a non-conforming building burned down, that small business owner wouldn't be able to rebuild on the same foot because it's a commercial building, not a residential building. And so that's where, small business is where my concern lies because with small business, you basically have all of the same worries that you have with residences. And so I, I would much rather see commercial treated the same as, as residential for that singular reason.
I, I will say, I haven't in my review of the last couple of years of zoning variance appeals, I have not seen I don't, nothing, definitely nothing major like that. I don't think any, I would have to double check, but I don't think any commercial structures that have applied for something that would have you know, been okay under this proposed code change. Now that said, it's definitely a point well taken and, and part of the reason that, you know, that was one of the options that was originally presented in the staff report. Right now, the regulation would be exactly the same as it is right now, which is, I mean, I should say, under the draft that is being discussed tonight, that was advertised, you know, that you've received, the code is not becoming any more stringent. And commercial structures, you know, small business owners would still be And commercial structures, you know, small business owners would still be able to go to the zoning hearing board and potentially get a variance granted to rebuild. In the same building footprint. But there is a version drafted. That would apply the same regulations to both residential and non-residential structures.
Yeah, that, that would be my strong preference.
But that's not what we're talking about tonight.
It's, it's not what was advertised. You know, again, it was kind of just the easiest. Add to run. Um, but if that was the will of council, we could definitely, you know, check the box to send it back to the county, do another hearing and, and go with that version instead.
Councilmember Spanholz.
I guess I have a couple of comments. So, um, while I certainly agree with councilwoman Smith. Related to support and concern for small business. I also think that expanding it to, to commercial does not just refer to small business. And considering what RJ is saying, that we haven't had an influx. Of commercial, non-conforming structure issues that. You know, if the national chain burns down and we want, we want our town to be rebuilt in a way that conforms with our current zoning. I would like to be able to have them come through the process. It doesn't mean they can't do it, what they want to do. Nor small businesses. And I'm sure in the case of small business, we would be open to. Assisting them in any way we can to rebuild their business in a way that works for them. But having said that, that's just a comment to that. I did. Just want to point out, it's, it's not a big thing. But our, one of our former council members, Greg Wiscus, had sent to council. A suggestion for a. What I would call a clarification and improvement. To section 1343.01A. I think everybody has it. RJ, did you receive it?
I did, yeah. I, I have, I have a couple. I think I have a couple of thoughts on that if, if I know where you're going, but.
Yeah, I, I. You might have a, because I know you were, um, very involved in the drafting of this, but. His, his thoughts, which included adding one additional sentence and one parenthetical. Addition seemed to bring more clarity to that provision, provision in my reading of it. So I just wanted to make sure that. Anything that I think in our ordinances that can bring further clarity and easier understanding is good.
Yeah. So the, um, one of the comments that I, when that email was forwarded to me that I saw was bringing forward the definition of what a non-conforming structure is. Which is in the existing code. Uh, you know, I'm totally. Fine with that. I think that's reasonable. It was a comment that came out of the planning commission's review as well. There were just a few, you know, minor formatting flip flops that they had also thought, you know, separating. Residential structures into a section and non-residential structures into a section instead of just kind of dealing with them. You know, one, two, one, two, in the way that it's drafted. Um, I didn't want to send that out before the meeting because I didn't want to confuse anyone as to what. Draft we were actually reviewing at the public hearing, but I do have a reworked, you know, edited draft. That reflects the comments from the planning commission, which do include bringing forward the non-conforming structure definition. Regarding the rest, I, I think that the way the language is written is legally the most clear and what I would recommend sticking with. But I, I do think that the definition clarification could be helpful to bring forward in, you know, revised draft.
Okay, thank you. Any other council questions or comments? Okay, do we have anyone signed up in? The chat for comment on this issue?
I did not receive any signups for this public hearing.
Okay. All right then, one more call for council. All right, hearing none. I closed the public hearing on the norm, non-conforming use structure. Now this is the. Regular public comment time. So if you didn't get enough time. And you're on these previous comments, you can, you got another crack at it. Or if you have a comment about something else, this is your time. So please sign up in the chat box, name, address. And anyone who signs up now will know you want public comment. So you don't have to say what you're talking about. RJ, do we have anyone?
I, I didn't get anyone additional from the original oil and gas list, but I, I do have Deb Sagan that wanted to continue.
Okay.
Another public comment.
If you still want to continue, you can, you've got. Another chance.
Thank you very kindly for my second chance. You don't get many of those in life.
True.
I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Mr. Schwager had made about the park. And I looked at the zoning map and I did see that, you know, most of the park is zoned as institutional. I wish they changed that somehow, those eyes. You know, it's so easy to get those mixed up. It's institutional and industrial. But anyway. So is that a possibility is my question. I didn't know that that was even a possibility that McCandless had control over the zoning in the park. And that would be something that I would recommend that would be discussed with our. County council member and Mr. Fitzgerald and maybe some of the other county council members who have districts that. You know, are overlaid in North Park. Because another comment I did want to make, and I have heard people in our town. Who are in favor of drilling in the park. Say that there are historically gas wells, you know, already drilled in the park. Uh, that have been there for many, many years and having. Been very familiar with the park, you can, um, there are odors of gas that leak in the park at certain sites. Where the wells are. So that's just all something that I'd like to add. So that, I think that's it. I won't get a third chance, I know. Unless I write it in, right?
That's right.
I might do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Deb. Any other comments, RJ?
We did have one more person sign up and. Okay. So you're on here. It's Marsha Caliendo.
Okay. Good evening. How's everyone doing?
There you are.
Hi there. Um, a, a comment about the public comments. If my memory serves me, I believe like 13 years ago when we actually met in person. Public comments in. The town council meetings were always at the end of town council meetings. And I think that gave a lot of people the opportunity to hear what was said at that meeting and then say. I, I've got a comment on that. And I realize, you know, life is. Hopefully we'll turn it to normal within the next few months, but. Why on the Zoom call do we have the public comments before the rest of your meetings? Because there maybe are some times that I might want to say something, but I don't know I want to say it because I haven't heard it yet.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll take that. Um, so. The problem with putting it at the end was. That we've already voted on, like under our old business, we. And new business, we potentially are going to vote on three things.
Okay.
So if we have public hearing, if we have public comment at the end, we've already voted on it.
Okay.
Do you see, do you see what I'm saying? So what we did before, and, and we can revisit this because when we first started doing this. We were trying to figure out the logistics of everything. And so when we had. A motion that would come up, you know, we'd have council comment and then we'd have public comment, you know, we'd have a motion to second. And so we stopped. And a lot of places, that's all they do. They just have public comment one time and that's it, period. And. I agreed with you and said, why, well, people don't know if they have a question because they haven't heard all the explanations. But then to have it at the end, then you've just, oh, you had a great point, but we already voted.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And we, and we did when we're live. Have that opportunity before you voted and that's really not possible this way. Well, it would just be, it would be very.
And we're getting, RJ's getting really good at this. What, what is she called? Our something wizard?
Zoom wizard. I'm the Zoom wizard.
Zoom wizard, so she's.
Something more to add to your resume.
We may be able to go back to that. And then, and bring that comment back in there, what, you know, where we had it, but. We just weren't good enough at figuring out how to do all this.
Okay.
You know, at the time, but, but that's what we were thinking. But yes, your, your point is well taken. And that, that. Something we consider doing again is getting that comment back in under those motions where it was. Cause this is working pretty good with this chat box thing. Yeah, so.
Okay. Well, well, I just, you know, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Got a great suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I did have Vincent Amantangelo. I hope I said that right. Sorry. It's been a lot of names I've had to say. But I'll send him a mic and camera request.
Okay, my second chance.
Yep.
There's one other item. I, I hope it's, I, I didn't have a chance to read every word in the ordinance. But I hope it's well defined that the operators are responsible for leakage. Both during the drilling and the active use of the well and then after the well is kept. Can anyone comment on that?
Yes. They are responsible.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I think that we've gotten everyone.
Okay. All right then. Um, then we close the public hearing. Um, on the, oh, no, excuse me, we're done with public hearings and we're going to close public comment. And we are going to move on to number seven. Is there a motion? Are there any changes that need to be brought to the minutes before we go to a motion? I thought they were pretty good this time. I didn't find any, um, and errors at all. Okay, all right. Since there are no additions or corrections, can I have a motion to accept them? Angel. Okay, thank you. All right, there's a motion by council member Woods. They're second. Okay, and a second by council member Clonan. Okay, all right. Again, if there's any comments about the minutes. Okay, hearing none. All those in, in favor of accepting the minutes submitted to each member council, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. Liaison reports, activities committee.
Thank you, Madam President. All of the council has received our most recent plans, including a proposal for February events. Surrounding around Valentine's Day with a focus on being kind and a virtual. Kind of Valentine party, which will include activities like crafts, some story time and even a STEM activity this month. So I'm very excited to. Have our, our young people in the town participate in that this month.
Congrat, congratulations and that your, um, make McCandless Marion Bright was the most watched video ever. On McCandless social, social media. So congratulations on that. That's, that's a great accomplishment.
All thanks to our town and residents for sending in their photos and for the wonderful orchestra from North Allegheny High School.
And maybe we could do something with spring flowers. I have a little, a couple of pictures I'd like to kind of submit and get in on that. So I just a thought.
We'll certainly bring that up next Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anything else from activities?
That's all. Thank you.
All right, EAC.
Madam President, quick question.
I'm sorry, council member Smith.
Just, uh, actually, I guess more of a comment than a question, but I saw that there was a, um. A Valentine's themed youth activity. That was floated. Is that something we could potentially coordinate with our junior council member with?
This activity, yeah, if, if he wanted to use, um, the Instagram, this would be a great place to start. Advertising that sort of thing. Um, he can certainly be a part of this. This is probably more age appropriate would be elementary for this activity. Not necessarily high school, but I welcome our junior council person's involvement anytime. Absolutely. And I think our council, our AAC committee would certainly welcome. Any input and volunteers from the high school students and teens in our community as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Um, EAC.
You, Madam President. The minutes from the last meeting of the AC are in council packet as well as. Our annual report, um, which is posted on our website. This is a. Report that we have made comprehensive since the inception of the EAC. I believe in 2016, which. Recounts all of the different things which are quite diverse that the EAC is working on. So that's one thing. And the other thing I just wanted to report out on was that. I believe it was the last meeting, um, I asked for councils nod on pursuing a couple of projects and one of those. Was to attempt to have another pit, uh, student capstone project. That was actually going to be focused on small business, appreciating, supporting, recruiting and sustaining them in McCandless. And my, our feedback is that. These students were quite excited about, um, our proposal. And they're working on now, there's, they're actually assigning two separate groups. To get more done on this important issue for our town. So more to come on that, but I was very pleased to hear that. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Would you like, it, it didn't really come out, well, it did. It's kind of part of the EAC, but did you want to mention the, um, overpopulation?
Oh, sure. Yeah. The, um, the deer, um, this is actually something that councilwoman. Woods and EAC has been working on, which is the February 16th speaker series that is being hosted by the EAC. And then, and, and our library to talk about our. The deer population and what we can do to control it. We also, the EAC is also. Considering issuing a recommendation in the future as to both. A potential of no feed ordinance. As well as a controlled hunt program. That would, I believe, be undertaken for consideration by council into the spring. Zach Coverit.
I think you got it. Just making people aware that if they want to sign up for that program to be part of that Zoom meeting, then. I think there are 66 places, where did I read that? 66 places left. So if you would like to sign up to, um, to be part of that, please do that. Anything else, EAC?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center.
Well, thank you, Madam President. The, uh, meeting minutes are in the packet. Posted to SharePoint. Uh, I'd like to thank council member Taral for, for. Uh, attending the meeting because I couldn't make it. So thank you, Mike. And this last meeting, I think, was the first meeting of the, of the new. The new member on that committee, Mr. Wall. So he was welcome there. And I think they are looking at reopening tentatively in March.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Nope, unless, unless Mike had anything to add.
Yeah, that's a pretty short meeting.
All right.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I can, real quick, Kim. Teach the stenographer. I want to make sure that I'm identifying the right one. I don't, I don't really see that we need. This stenographer any longer unless you have a really, a real interest in anything else that we're talking about today. You're more than welcome to stay.
I was gonna, I didn't, I was gonna check with you during this, this point. I wasn't sure if you still needed.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to stay, but it's not necessary.
After the public hearings, you're free to go.
Okay, all right.
But thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much. And you guys can finish up. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, no meeting from Joint Rec. Council, Councilmember Raj?
Let me find him on here.
We we have your report.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, I'll just say there's nothing much to add to it. Everything is right there. And if, again, if anybody has any questions about it, please feel free to email me at rajkindy15@gmail.com. Thank you.
And the Instagram site is looking to be up the end of January, which is pretty close, or first of February. So please be looking for that in our social media, and maybe we can have directions on how to do that, Raj. That's be a good old, that'd be a good thing, like all directions, all people.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes from the December meeting, financials, and an update on the portion of the subscription program that included McCandless and Franklin Park is in council packets. I would like to, I mean, this, by the way, the subscription plan, there were modifications to the pricing. There, the percentage of subscription responders is slightly down, but the the dollars are up, which is a good sign and very needed by our ambulance authority. I'd also like to point out for council and to the public that, so they're aware of it, that the Capitol Drive for the ambulance authority will take place this summer. And the other three communities serviced by the ambulance authority, their subscription drive will occur in the fall. More to come on that. Any questions or comments?
Quick question.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, two quick questions. The one is, they are realigning the fiscal years, right, to line up and then line up with ours as well?
Correct.
Okay, so going forward, we'll have kind of that information that's blank right now. But then just from quick napkin math, if, you know, if the blank box performs like the McCandless and Franklin Park box did, it looks like there's an increase in revenue of like $130,000. And so that that seems to be a pretty substantial positive change for us.
I think so far, it's looking good and well needed.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Spawn Hall, be sure and let the Franklin Park Ambulance Authority know that they can certainly advertise their subscription program on the town's media sites also to help them out with that. We'd be glad to help support that.
I'll absolutely do that. Thank you.
Anything else for the ambulance authority? All right, the MIDA, I believe, had no meeting. McCandless Cemetery Authority.
The minutes for both the regular meeting and the reconvened meeting are in the packet. And only thing I'll note, I think I already mentioned it, but now the the meeting minutes have actually been approved. There's no rate increase for 2021. So I will mention it again.
Always good news. North Hills Council of Governments. Angela? Hello? Can you hear, you can't hear me?
I got Angela unmuted, but she's not making any noise when she talks.
We can't, can you hear us, Angela? We can't hear you.
I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Okay, okay, okay. Right, all right. I couldn't tell, everyone was not moving, and I'm like, am I frozen? Are they frozen?
No, just wrong microphone selected. Anyway, the November meeting minutes are in your packets. I'm happy to answer your questions if anyone has any.
No, okay. Okay. Northland Library.
There was no meeting in December, so no new minutes or anything. The next meeting is coming up tomorrow, I believe.
All right. All right, thank you. I think the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority also had no meeting. I believe that's correct. And the Personnel Board had no meeting, but we are, have scheduled a meeting in February. So we will have a report on that. Carolyn will have a report on that next, next, next month. Planning Commission, there's nothing coming forward from the Planning Commission right now. You have the minutes. If you have any questions, we can certainly answer those. Okay, Technology Committee.
No, okay, technology.
The January minutes are in your packets. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Councilmember Spawn Hall.
Yeah, thank you. So, Councilmember Woods, I read about the PPD issue, and it sounded like the Technology Committee is going to, is on top of it, going to issue further recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes, they're looking at it, and they had some insight onto things that we should be asking, which which were reflected in the minutes. But Bob, were we expecting like a recommendation outright from them on what to do?
What we're, what we're trying to figure, look at is work with them to develop a draft ordinance that then the council can consider. It's going to be some back and forth in trying to sort out what we can and can't do. There's going to be factors that our engineers are involved in identifying areas of the town where we can and can't have these operating. My hope is that the Technology Committee will be able to provide us with some insight in terms of what these units are capable of and not capable of as we move forward. So we're all learning.
For all the regular people who are like hip with the PDD, is, that's a personal delivery device, and it is a robot that rolls around on the ground and brings you your pizza and your Amazon things or whatever it is you order.
For the people, yeah. Go ahead, Kim.
They've been approved, this is a layperson, this is not technology explanation, this is for all the rest of us. And so this was approved by the state. So, you know, Harrisburg goes, okay, you guys got, we've just approved these. You guys got, you know, a couple of weeks to figure out now where they can go. So that's what we have to figure out. So we're working on figuring out what the heck they even are, let alone where they go and what they do. So how was that? Was that good for a bottom line?
That was really good. That was good. I was going to just say to the, to those brave souls that are still on the the meeting with us, think of a Yeti cooler on wheels, and that that'll give you a pretty good picture of what these things look like.
But they can be up to 72 inches tall.
Yes.
Even though most of them aren't. So that would be the Yeti that walks through the park that's been hiding from people.
Pretty much, yes. Yeah.
Anyway, more to come, more to come on that. We have to all get educated. There'll be a big program, be a big public thing. So don't anybody get excited. You know, we're learning about it. We're going to hear all about it. So but it is going to be weird, just so you know, get ready. Anything else on technology, Angela? So I see that we're looking at our television channels like almost real. So this is very, very exciting.
It is real.
It is real.
Okay, well, I, I, like, um, but, okay, like, really getting up and doing a lot of good things. You were, I noticed in the minutes that you were talking about, like, Mech TV, a logo. I wonder if we could do a logo contest or something.
I think that would be a really fun idea.
Okay, so maybe we can pitch that idea on our social media and get some of our creative people to come out and submit some of those. You think we could do something like that, Bob?
Sure.
Okay, all right, good. I'm glad you like that idea. Good. Everybody, is everybody okay with that? Okay, good. All right, thanks. Anything else from technology?
Nope.
Okay, volunteer firefighter steering committee.
No meeting, but we went.
Sorry, you're right. Zoning Hearing Board.
Thank you. The minutes are in your packets, and I just want to additionally say thank you to Mr. Tom Edwards for many, many years of service on our zoning hearing board. He is retiring from us, and we'll be welcoming Mr. Scott Metzger.
All right, thank you. Okay, I have no council reports or correspondence. Town managers report.
You've all received a copy of the town manager's report. A fairly light month just because of the holidays. I have nothing really to highlight at this point. If you have any questions, feel free to give me the touch base with you.
Okay. Town attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam President. I submitted my report, so it should be part of the SharePoint if you haven't looked at it already. But I do have one update. I thought I could update council on that development that occurred today. Would you like me to, Kim?
No, I would love you to. Thank you.
Okay. As everybody remembers, you instructed my office to take a position on the MSRP LLC application for variance. That's the American Natural Station. And we learned today that the applicant has withdrawn their application. And so for the moment, there's nothing happening there. So the strategy was successful, and that's the end of my report.
I would thank, like to thank our solicitor, Mr. Corble, for making that suggestion and helping form that strategy. So kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are down. Anything else?
Madam President, I did have a quick question.
Okay.
For, and I, I don't think this is something, it does involve a litigation matter, but I don't think it's anything that we would have to worry about doing privately. I was just wondering, I know there was, there was a case that had been dismissed with prejudice at the end of December.
Um, Councilmember Smith, could I, I'm a little concerned about this question. Could I ask you to address our solicitor privately?
Sure, sure.
Okay, I just don't want us to make any, I don't want us to do anything, you know.
Fair enough.
If you don't mind, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, okay. All right, so let's, let's head on to Old Business. And we have reviewed the checklist of, or reviewed the checklist of bills number 12, dated December 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020, totaling $1,500,000. I can't do this. $1,580,705.09 submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website. Are there any questions about that? Trish is still here. No? Everybody's good? Did you freeze? Move, so I know if I'm frozen. Oh, good, Carolyn moved. Okay, all right. So we did review those. The B under Old Business is, we discussed this last week, but I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to have any more discussion about it, or was there any more questions about it, about the withdrawal from the Joint Summer Recreation Program? Do, is there any more questions? Do we need to have any more discussion about that? If we do, we can certainly have that. If we don't, and council is ready, we can possibly take action on that. So are there any comments or questions about this? Okay. Okay. Trish, do you want to make the, are we, are you ready? You want to make the motion?
Sure. Is it, it's a motion then? Okay.
Well, there's no more comment, so you can make the motion if we get a second, and then we can vote on it. Okay?
Okay. I'd like to move to withdraw the town of McCandless from the GJ Hoffman Jr. Joint Recreation Program effective calendar year 2022.
Okay, and Councilmember Swagger has seconded. Are there any comments or questions from any council members on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of withdrawing from this agreement, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam President, before we leave Old Business, just from the housekeeping item, we actually have a motion to approve the checklist thing number 12.
Oh, okay. All right, it just said review, so we need to approve? Okay, all right. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Town moved.
Okay, Councilmember Woods. Is there a second? Okay, I think Councilmember Smith got in on that. We had already discussed if there were any questions. So all those in favor of accepting the checklist thing number 12, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, checks are approved. Do we need an explanation at all before we, on New Business? Bob, do you want to just give a short thing on what that is?
Sure. At the last meeting, we approved a proposal or an agreement with MBM Collections, also known as Mauro Brongo Mauro Law Firm, to handle delinquent tax collection on behalf of the town. This is a second piece of that arrangement and a fee resolution that outlines the fees that MBM Collections is able to charge a delinquent taxpayer in the event that they they start a collection procedure. I will say for the public record that these fees are not paid by the town, by the taxpayer themselves as part of the collection process. And there are times, however, that the town will front some money for, say, the process of liens or filing of liens. But then those funds are recovered, and the first dollars of the recovery are returned to the town for reimbursement of any of those fees. So this is a no-cost item to the town of McCandless. But this is an effort to really get the collection done as early as possible so that the fees don't build up for the taxpayer.
Thank you for that. That was a great clarification. Thank you for that. Are there any questions about this? The floor is open for a motion.
Madam President.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I move to adopt a resolution number one of 2021, providing a schedule of attorney's fees, charges, and expenses, as well as expenses and fees established in accordance with Act 1 of 1996 and Act 20 of 2003 to be charged in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes.
Is there a second? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Spawn Hall. Again, any questions or comments on this? All right, hearing none. I'm sorry, was it, was, did someone speak up? Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, is there any new, any other new business?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Woods.
Before we adjourn, can I make a motion that we move to executive session briefly to get Councilwoman Smith's question answered? And I have one for the town attorney as well.
Does that require all of council to meet, or is that something that you want to do privately with the solicitor? Does it require all of council?
I could do it privately, Councilwoman Smith.
Okay.
I'm happy to stick around if the two of you want to stick around on the call. I don't know if we can throw everybody off that doesn't need to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, all right, if, if the entire council needs to be there, then we certainly can be, but if it's just a personal question, then you could ask him yourself, I mean, just let me know, okay? All right, okay, all right, any other new business? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, I think that was Councilmember Woods, I think. Second? Okay, Councilmember Clonan? Okay, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
RJ, can you make me the host, and then I'll, I'll stick around?
Yes, I am just about to stop the recording.